Welcome, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with the executive order N two nine twenty issued by the California Governor Gavin Newsom on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section five four nine five zero ET Sequence, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will be physically open to the public. Members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Join Zoom meeting information was also posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the city council meetings by emailing the city clerk at city clerk at C I dot series dot C A dot U S. By five P M. The date of the meeting. Include the agenda item number on the public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the city council and kept on file as part of our official record of the city council. Welcome, everybody, to the city council chambers today, Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Salvera.
There.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. And today we have an invocation by Pastor Dick Corners from the First Baptist Church. If he is here today, everybody please stand up.
Join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, I give you thanks tonight for the city of Series in which we live. For these men and women who have gathered tonight to do business here. Knowing that you hold all of life and all of history in your hands, we ask for grace to live well. Even as we face many challenges. We ask for your mercies towards our city, our county, and our state. And pray that we will remember your desire for us to pray that your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We look to you for our welfare, for our prosperity, for our safety, and for the blessings of life. Bless us now during these proceedings tonight. Pray in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Today, there are no presentations. We'll begin with citizens' communication. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two thousand and seven dash one zero six. For expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter that is not posted on the agenda. Unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to no more than five minutes provision. Today, do we have anybody in person who would like to speak? I will begin with, I do have somebody here, I have a request by David King. Please step up, sir.
Good evening. As I haven't spoken with you all before, I'm sure Series Police Department and Ms. Perez has heard from me many, many times. I live currently on Canyon Drive between Virginia Parks Elementary School and a park. On every single given day, I cannot be out in front of my house without watching cars coming by my house doing fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour speeding zone. In the mornings while taking my son to school or in the afternoon bringing him home. There have been several times where I and my son have almost been ran over by these cars. I have called Series PD many, many times. They have come out and done what they can do. However, there's nothing they can do because they have to catch them in the act. There has got to be something done about this. I have been living there for eight years. For eight years, Series PD has heard from me. Recently, on the tenth of this month, one of my pets got out. She wanted to be out front with me. Still, she figured out how to open her doggy door. So now I have a police report where she got out. A speeding car hit her. They stopped, looked at me, and sped away. That is a family pet. That family pet is, just as I said, family. Well, that is just like my son or my daughter being hit by a car. And this is the type of thing that happens every day. I can't let my son outside to play. I talk to my fellow neighbors. They don't let their children, many of them, out to play because of these cars. I ask of you to do something. Put a light where the crosswalk is. Put speed bumps. Hire more serious police officers so they could be around more. I see them out there giving tickets in front of my house, but they can't be there every day, every moment of the day. They put their trailers out there. People see the trailer, they slow down, they get past it, they speed up. I watch them. I'm out there every day. I'm retired military, twenty-three years. I retired here between a school and a park, hoping that my son can grow up somewhere nice and clean. I grew up in East San Jose. I didn't want that from my son. And now here he is. I can't let him outside because cars come around the corners, coming up on the sidewalks, coming up on two wheels, playing dart games, high school students. I can go on with story after story after story of where I've called Series PD, and they've done their part. I now ask the city to please come up with some kind of resolution in that area. I know this is a citywide problem. I get that. But I ask of you to please come up with something. Speed bumps. Stoplights. Something permanent. Give me the right to stop them. I jump out in front of cars and say, stop. And they drive around me and flip me off as they're doing fifty miles an hour down my street. I put a thing out there that said, children at play, slow down. They run it over and steal it. I've been doing my part. Series PD has done their part. I now ask the city to do theirs. Please help me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Captain Cranes, that's something we can look into. I know you guys, you guys been out there a couple of times, but.
Yeah, we can take another look at it. Lieutenant Vieira, who's in charge of our traffic division, has been in contact with Mr. King. And our traffic officers do go out there and do extra patrol. I think at this point, what we're probably looking for is something like a speed bump or something to kind of, it kind of alleviate that speeding problem when we're not there.
Okay.
But it's still on our radars, next patrol, it's still in there in our traffic unit, along with several places in town, makes that rotation through there.
Okay. Thank you, Captain. Any members of the public that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, actually, I'm sorry about that. No worries.
John Warren, Series.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thirty-five citations. Over the Fourth of July weekend. I'm wondering if any of them have been resolved, if any of them have been.
Mr. Warren, could you bring the microphone up closer to you if possible, please? Thank you.
There were thirty-five citations written over the Fourth of July week or time period for the fireworks violations. And I was wondering if any of them have been resolved or cleared or paid or what the status might be.
Captain, I'm sure you don't have that right in front of you, but if it's something we can look into. Okay. Looks like the finance department might have an answer for it.
I don't have an answer. I can look into it, though.
You'll look into it.
Would there have been payments? I know that.
Okay.
I just don't know how many have been paid in full or, you know, have gone through the appeal process, or I don't have that in front of me right now.
I see.
I can get the answer.
So it's something that's in progress. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Appreciate your time.
And Mayor, we did have five that went to appeals two weeks ago, and I don't think we've received those results back on those yet.
Vice Mayor. We do have a button push. I'm sorry, it doesn't have anybody's name on it. Are you, Helen? Was that you?
Captain Crane, adder, I was going to say we had some go to appeal. So some have been paid, some have gone to appeal, and we can get you the information on the rest.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. If there's nobody else in the public, we'll go ahead with Zoom. We have two hands raised.
Yes, Mayor, first person with their hand raised is John Osgood. Mr. Osgood, I'll unmute your mic. Your mic is on.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I've sent all of you an email. I received a response from Councilmember Rhino. What I'd like to speak to you about this evening is it's been at least nine months here. We've had a vacancy. We've recently had the election, and we know who will be appointed to fill that seat. We have other business to attend to. We have planning commissions, Measure H committees. We have vacancies on those boards that need to be filled. With the delay in handling the people's business on those matters, I would request of you that we keep the applicants in place that are in place now and reopen the application period for those positions and make a decision moving forward as soon as Mr. Casey is seated. With that said, I think it's pertinent that we make a decision this evening or in the near future, if that's through a special meeting, to address this application period. But with the delay, like I said, I think we need to reopen that. And, you know, I'm going to tell you right now, I intend to submit my name. We have a lot of things we need to address in Series, and the way we've been doing them for many years does not work. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Next person.
Next person with their hand raised is Sheila Brandt. Ms. Brandt, I'll unmute your mic. Ms. Brandt, I'll ask one more time to unmute your mic.
Good evening. This is Sheila Brandt. I'm speaking about the nine eleven memorial that we did on Saturday out at Whitmore Park. I have to say, I was hoping that there would be more people there. But as I started talking to people later that day and on Sunday, nobody knew that there was anything going on at the park. And I was just wondering whose responsibility that was to get the information out. I know it was in the Series Courier because that's where Lee and I saw that it was, there was going to be a presentation at the park, so we went. But was there any other type of information out to the public? Does no one know whose responsibility that might have been?
I think the American Legion organized the event, Ms. Brandt.
So they would have been the one that needed to put information out to the public so that they knew to come to the park?
Yes, we did make an announcement, I believe, at the primary meeting. No, we didn't.
Correct.
They emailed all of us, I know that.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to address was the speeding on the residential streets. It's crazy going down Central Avenue. We can hear them. We live over off of Central by Caswell Elementary, and we can hear them when they go through the four ways off on Caswell and Central. And they have got to be going seventy by the time they hit Hatch. So I'm sure quite a few of those people are running that red light. There's no way they can stop it. It's going all night long. I believe it was Saturday night. It sounded like they were spinning donuts out on Central. It was so loud, it woke myself and my dog up, and we could smell tires burning because it was so close to our home. So we requested many times for our street on Haley Aloha to get speed bumps because they were flying down our street. But this is a citywide problem. The people just think that they don't even have to follow the speed limit, no matter what. So I agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier. We need to do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Councilmember Ryan wanted to say something.
Speaking to Mrs. Brandt's comment about not having a lot of notification about the ceremony. On our city's webpage, don't we have on the front page a calendar?
We do have a calendar.
We do. And so I'm wondering, is that like a community calendar that when city staff is notified of something, that it can just be put on there?
I can start adding.
I don't know what the rest of the council feels like, but I think that would be a good place to put it.
It shouldn't be a problem. I mean, I understand there's just so many different ways of getting information nowadays. I think as long as we just do our part. That'd be the first step. Is there anybody else?
Yes, next person with their hand raised is Lee Brandt. Mr. Brandt, I'll unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted.
Good evening, Council. I just have a couple of statements to make. Our current water bill is two hundred and five dollars. It just kind of, it took me by surprise. And, you know, it's just the two of us, and we live in like a seventeen hundred square foot house on a corner. And we watch what we're watering, blah, blah, blah. And I just, I just can't imagine what a house would be like across the street from us. You know, that there's, there's got to be at least ten people living in that house. And it's like, I can't imagine what their water bill is, you know? And I understand it's progress and, you know, but when it finally made the two hundred dollar mark, that's when I decided I needed to say something. You know, I understand that there's a lot going on with our water, with our surface water and things like that. And I just, I was just blown away, and I felt I had to say something. You know, my other statement would be is my condolences go to Officer Graywall and his family, the officer out of Galt. They did his services today. What a horrible accident that had to have been. And for some reason, he looks very familiar. I don't know why, did he, at one time, did he serve with Series PD? Maybe not. Yeah. And then, as far as the speeding goes, I don't know the name of the street, but they did, like, if you go, if you go from ninety-nine on Main Street in Turlock towards Golden State, you'll see where they redid it, and they brought out like the sidewalk and stuff like that. You know, it like deters people from speeding. You know, I think if you can go down the road, you know, and I know, and I know it's a major problem, but, you know, maybe it's something that we could think about in the future. You know, I mean, with all of our gas tax and all that stuff, you know, we're supposed to have the, you know, the proposition elevens and all this thing. You know, we're supposed to have all this extra money wherever it is. You know, I don't know, it's just a suggestion. You know, I don't know the name of the street. It's down there by Station Three, I believe, or Station Four Fire Station. You'll, you'll know what I'm talking about. So anyway, that's about it for me, and best of luck to you guys. And good, and congratulations to, yeah, Mr. Casey. So, all right. Take care. Thank you much.
Thank you.
There are no other.
There are no, okay. There's no emails.
No, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, the public comment period is now closed. Let's go ahead and move on to a conflict of interest. Is there anybody in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing no one. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Is there anyone on the city council that would like a consent item pulled for the discussion? Vice Mayor?
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight. Anyone else from the council? Seeing no one? Is there anyone from the public that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? Seeing no one? Okay, if anybody would like to move with the motion to move on with the rest of the.
Move to approve consent calendar one, two, three, four, five, and six.
We get a roll call, please. Oh, sorry about that.
One second.
Okay, we get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Salvera.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Motion passes forward zero.
Moving to consent item number seven. Motion accepting the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty City of Series audited financial statements and audit report for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have a few questions and clarifications that I want to make about this audit. And I want to start off with the water fund. This audit talked about the water fund on, I don't have the page number here, but it states seven million dollar plus in revenue for the water fund. And I was wondering what happens to this surplus in the water fund?
There, currently, there's no surplus. The C I P project for the River Bluff Storage Tank was not approved at that time. And/or we have capital improvement projects that haven't quite gone out to bid yet to prepare for the surface water project coming. So there's probably all the fifteen million dollars in expenditures coming. So that's the seven million isn't in excess in any way.
It just seemed like that on a graph in the audit, but we didn't, the audit was done before we approved
Correct.
the big dollar ticket for.
Financials were given to the audit prior to the project being approved by council.
Okay. In your opinion, Director, the water fund is not even what we got coming in, what we're putting out?
It's a little bit of both. You know, we're trying, right now, we're trying to juggle with the S R F loan that was approved. Trying to juggle the amount of money that's being required to pay on an annual basis for the S R F loan, along with the capital project. So we're maintaining. We're not in negative, and we're not, you know, in the green by any means, but we are maintaining, and Latisha and I watched the budget pretty closely.
And I saw on there the Water Quality Stinking Fund. That's another fund that's in our water fund, or is that a separate fund?
It's, it's, there are, there are three funds attached, water, water quality thinking. So the water fund, Water Quality Stinking Fund, and what do you, on the count, there's a bond fund as well. The Water Quality Stinking Fund was a fund that was, there was transfers made to that fund a bunch of years, several years ago, to help offset some costs and put some money into a different fund for capital projects. I believe we stopped that a few years ago, just simply because of more of a transfer of money from one fund to another for doing the same expenses. It made it easier as to track everything with one fund.
Or streamlined.
Correct.
I think that's going to be all the questions for you, Director. Now I want to direct my questions to our finance director. I noticed in here the Della Terra loan.
Della Terra.
Can you give me some background on that loan and how that came about for the city?
So the city or the CRA loaned money, loaned money to Della Terra, and that's the apartments right at the end of Della over behind Burger King, yeah, off of Mitchell. So they, they approved this loan back in in two thousand and five. It's due in fifty-five years. It is a three percent simple interest that isn't technically due till fifty-five years are up.
This is a deal the city made with the apartment complex?
Yes, these are low-income apartments.
Okay.
They were building.
And now I want to talk about the deficiency fund balances. On there, they had listed the gas tax, streetlight, landscape district, C Mac, the community center, the Whitmore House, River Bluff Regional Park, and the Whitmore Mansion. Are those accurate deficits for our current budget? Or were these prior numbers?
So these were all as of six thirty, two thousand and twenty. The gas tax, there was a decrease in revenue in two thousand and nineteen, which caused us to have a deficit in that, in that balance. But we have since then had more revenue than expenditure, so it is slowly becoming less of a deficit. It's just based on the money that we receive from the state for gas tax.
Okay.
The streetlight and landscape, these are fees that are charged to the residents, and the fee is not high enough to cover the operational costs right now. So that one is a deficit year after year. And the C Mac is, is on a reimbursement basis. So we have to spend the funds first, and then the state will reimburse us for them. So at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, we did have a deficit because we were waiting on a reimbursement. We have since received that reimbursement.
Good. Real quick, on the landscape lighting district, has that been deficient since its inception?
I believe so, yes.
Now, the CPI does, the CPI not keep up with the increase of cost business?
It it never pays for itself.
No, it's always a deficiency.
Thank you for that clarification, and then on to the community center, I think is next.
So um, the community center, it's just that, you know, revenues or expenditures are exceeding the revenues that are coming in. And that's been since the beginning of the community center, we were hoping that, you know, we've been hoping that um. The revenue would exceed the expenditures, but it just.
And that the deficit has increased from one point seven million.
It's higher, yes, especially because uh, of the COVID and the shutdown.
Then the Whitmore House, there was only a hundred and twenty dollars deficit.
Yes, and that um, the Whitmore House, we, the uh, the city pays for the water, the electricity, the phone. Uh, you know, those kind of expenses, and we do a transfer at the end of the year for actual expenditures that we've um. That we have paid out, two hundred and twenty dollar deficit has been carrying on for uh, several years now, so we can take care of that at the end of this year.
Okay. And River Bluff Regional Park, what's the?
Um, that, that was the same, same as the CMAC, it's a reimbursement, it was a project that we were doing. And we were just waiting on reimbursement of the funds.
Okay, and Whitmore Mansion?
The Whitmore Mansion, um, again, it's the operational costs are more than the revenue that's coming in, we were hoping to get. Revenue from rentals and and that's not happening.
So similar story to the community center?
Yes.
And now excess expenditures, uh, they were listed as Measure H. S L E S F, uh, traffic safety. And the Series Community Foundation, can you talk a little bit about those four items?
The Measure H, so we um, we estimate the revenue that's coming, that's gonna come in every year, of course, our estimates are never. Uh, spot on, and there was uh, one year, last that year. Um, revenues came in higher than we estimated, so we spent more money than we budgeted for, as we had the revenue in. Um, the S L E S F pays for one of our officers, it is a um, grant from the county, San Slas County. So with that one, we budget a hundred thousand dollars for salary and then, but we never know exactly what the revenue is gonna be, that that they're gonna send us that year. So then, um, at the end of the year, what we do is we. Um, transfer from the general fund to this fund, the the expenditures to equal the revenue that came in.
And that, just for clarification, I'm sorry to interrupt you, that's uh, around a hundred thousand dollars annually from the county.
Budget a hundred thousand dollars, that year it came in at like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue that they sent us, so we.
It could be more, could be.
It's never less than a hundred, but it could be, it's always more, yeah. Um, traffic safety is, the revenue from that one comes from motor vehicle fines, uh, vehicle code fines, traffic violation, proof correction. So we don't budget for any expenditures in this account. Because again, we don't know exactly how much money we're gonna get, but at the end of the year, what we do is we take the amount that we received in revenue. And we use it towards um, police vehicle maintenance, we do a transfer of expenditures. And then the community foundation, um, this one is donation based, so. Again, there, um, there are some expenditures that are budgeted for, but if someone makes a donation for like. The tree, the tree grove over in Smyrna Park and they want a plaque, you know, then we have to buy the plaque, so we didn't budget for the price of that plaque.
Thank you for your clarification, uh, next, I I just want to get some clarification on this audit. Uh, some of the language to me was a little confusing. Just want to get clarification on what this means, for example, uh. It states in here, our audit does not provide a legal determination of the city's compliance. Um, on issue, so this doesn't give us any. Standard or opinion on our legality of our compliance to federal regulations or state regulations?
They put that in because they are auditors and not attorneys. Cannot, uh, they cannot give a legal opinion.
And is there a type of audit that also involves attorneys and as well as auditors?
Um, that I am not sure of, I know there are different types of audits. Um. Our auditor happens to be on the call if you would like to. With him.
Well, let let me read another quote here and uh, maybe they could provide some clarification. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit. And accordingly, we do not express such an opinion, the results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance. And other matters that required to be reported under state audit, under government auditing standards. For the purpose of this report, it says the purpose of this report is solely to describe the scope. Of our testing of internal control and compliance. And the result of that testing and not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness. Of the entity's internal control or on compliance. Uh, I guess that gets to it is. What kind of an auditor would judge the effect and effectiveness of our internal control or compliance?
Um, that would probably fall under an organ, operational audit. That type of audit um, evaluates the city's organizational effectiveness. Efficiency and the economy of operations and under our control.
And have we done an audit like that in the past?
That I can recall, no.
Thank you for your clarification.
Just wanted to make sure you did talk about Measure H, was those questions answered on the break? Was it strictly seven, right?
City Attorney, can we take both items at the same time or? Okay, like, I'll go to my Measure H questions, now I just have a few, you already touched on this earlier. I just want to clarify that that fund had a surplus this year and was healthier than expected.
Yes.
Um, and the. The revenue in that fund is solely dedicated to what type of expenditures, can you provide those?
Police and fire for patrol officers and their needs.
Thank you. That was your question, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any questions from the audience? Oh, it's good. Welcome.
Got you guys on Zoom earlier on my way down, uh, on the Measure H stuff, I notice in there. We're, we're looking at payments to professional organizations, fraternal organizations, subscription based things. I don't think that that these types of expenditures were in the intent of the people when they passed Measure H. That our tax dollars would go for those types of things. These professionals, be it the chief of police, the fire chief, the the police officers. They, they're allowed in the federal tax code to write those things off against their personal income, and we shouldn't be funding fraternal organizations. If we could look into that in the future, is not funding those things, again, I'm not saying that we need to. To stop funding our officers' uniforms, but there are allowances for all citizens in the tax code to. Write off the cost of your uniforms and we're getting right down to your shoes and in any items you use for work. When we as citizens have to pay for that ourselves and utilize those deductions, our employees should as well. And we should use that Measure H money only for more officers, more firefighters. You know, more support staff, the intent of the people was not for this laundry list of things that's in that report to be being paid for. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Have seen any more questions, we. See what the, you have a question, Vice Mayor?
I do want to clarify and ask the finance director, are there subscriptions or dues? Uh, to organizations paid through Measure H for officers or firefighters in the past?
Um, if they are, they are strictly for the the police and and firefighters that we are paying through Measure H. Being for through Measure H.
Okay, thank you for the.
We have a list of of officers and firefighters that that we were paying.
Thank you.
If we can see with the most, seven, eight?
Well, I would like to state uh, that I think we need an operational audit. We can't remember when the last time we've done one, I think we need one. And because of that, I can't support these audits at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item seven and eight.
Second.
Get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Salvera.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Nay.
And Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
And passes three, one.
Moving on to business. Resolution number twenty twenty-one ninety, proven in agreement with Big Valley Grace, Billy Church Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. When it looks like Big Valley Grace has requested this item to be continued, the attorney, please let me break on that, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh. BBG did request this item be continued, I think you might find a simpler version come back to you uh, in the future, but that is their request and no. Staff reports supports that.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for that to be continued or we just?
It's not a public hearing, so we're going to have to continue to date certain, but if you're in agreement with that, uh, we'll just bring it back when it's ready.
And we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public hearing. Number ten, public hearing to consider the approval of resolution number twenty twenty-one nine four, adopting the twenty twenty urban water management plan. Including the method for determining urban water usage, use targets as required by the Water Conservation Act of two thousand and nine. I believe Jeremy has a a staff report for us.
Tonight, we have a presentation, Karen Morgan with the Public Works Department along Asia Verberg from Blackwater Consulting Engineers. Presentation and we'll take your questions afterwards.
That was good.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Hello, yes, we can.
Evening, Mayor and Council, Jeremy's already introduced me, I'm Karen Morgan with the Public Works Department. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring you our twenty twenty urban water management plan update. Brief history, in two thousand and one, California adopted two landmark pieces of legislation, Senate Bills two twenty-one. These two laws required land use authorities to demonstrate long-term water supply availability. Before approving new large development projects or similar sized commercial or industrial projects. Urban Water Management Planning Act was passed in nineteen eighty-three. Act required all large urban utilities serving at least three thousand. Actions or supplying at least three thousand acre feet per year. For a water year to develop long-term plans for water supply and demand in their service areas. The Urban Water Management Plan are prepared by urban water suppliers every five years. These plans support the suppliers' long-term resource planning, ensure the adequate water supplies are available to meet existing. The list of required elements in the urban water management plans have been updated numerous times to assess if current and future water supply. Current and future water supply sources will meet water demand reliability in normal years, as well as a single dry year or multi-dry years. The requirements for the urban water management plans, plans are found in two sections of the California Water Code. One zero six one zero and one zero six five six and one zero six zero eight. This year's guidance for the twenty twenty urban water management plan date was issued March of twenty twenty-one this year. Points to remember, they are to assess the reliability of water sources over a twenty-year planning timeframe. Describe management measures and water shortage contingency plans. Report progress towards meeting a targeted twenty percent reduction per capita or per person. In the urban water consumption by the year of twenty twenty, which we have met. Discuss the use and planned use of recycled water. A few changes have been made since the twenty fifteen Urban Water Management Plan, they include. Five consecutive dry year water reliability assessment, a drought risk assessment, seismic risk. Energy use, water loss reporting for five years, groundwater supplies coordination, and a lay description of the water system. And I've got Blackwater Engineering, they were contracted with us to update the twenty twenty urban water management plan on September fifteen. Twenty, I have Asia Verberg and Allison Faruja, they're here to present to you the twenty twenty.
And thank you for having us here tonight to present this urban water management plan. Karen did a really good job, my first couple of slides, kind of giving you an overview of the purpose of the urban water management. Document and the presence of the California Water Code. So I'm just gonna touch on that and just add that the document is to be updated every five years and probably most importantly for the city is that it's required. To be eligible for state and federal loans. All right, so um, the Urban Water Management Plan, this is just an overview of the organization of the document, there's ten chapters. Um, I won't go through each component, but each of these chapters um, covers everything to meet the purpose of the document. To serve as a um, a document to maintain efficient use of water supplies, continue to promote conservation programs and policies. Ensure that sufficient water supplies are available for future beneficial use and provide a mechanism for response during drought conditions. The Urban Water Management Plan Act requires that the city coordinate and solicit participation with appropriate nearby agencies. And the public for preparation of the urban water management plan, the city provided formal written notice to the appropriate agencies. That the city's urban water management plan was being updated, this notification was completed in June of this year. Which meets the requirement to provide notice at least sixty days prior to the public hearing of the plan, which is tonight. The city was required to post a notice of the local, in the local newspaper, at least fourteen days prior to this public hearing. Saying that the urban water management plan is being updated and is available for review by the public. The notice was published the week of October, or August twenty-third and August thirtieth. This public hearing provides an opportunity for the city's customers, residents and employees to learn and ask questions about the current and future water supply of the city. The Urban Water Management Plan Plan Act requires that the urban water management plan include a description of the city's water system service area. And various aspects of the service area, including the current projected population, climate. And other social, economic and demographic factors affecting which, uh, affecting the city's water management planning. The city's current service area consists of eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five municipal connections. In twenty twenty, the volume of water supplied was two thousand one hundred and fifty-one million gallons. There are forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty residents and land uses is comprised of residential. Commercial, industrial, parks and open space, public uses, agriculture, agricultural and multifamily residential. I'm gonna turn it over to Allison for you, for you.
Okay, next slide. The Urban Water Management Plan includes a water demand projections for the next twenty years. As you can see in this bar chart, the water demands in the city are projected to increase from approximately two thousand million gallons today. To approximately four thousand one hundred and fifty-two million gallons by the year two thousand thirty-five. Most of that demand will come from family households. Next slide. Senate Bill X seven seven, also known. Senate Bill X seven-seven, also known as the Water Conservation Act of two thousand nine, required that water suppliers reduce per capita water demands by twenty percent by the year twenty twenty. The urban water management plan is to document compliance with this requirement. Average water demands from two thousand one to two thousand two, ten were analyzed to develop a baseline demand of two hundred twenty-four gallons per capita per day. A twenty percent reduction would correspond to one hundred eighty gallons per capita per day. We found that in twenty twenty, the average resident used a hundred twenty-one gallons per capita per day, which is over fifty percent reduction from the baseline demands and far exceeds the required reduction. I also looked around at other urban water management plans in the area, and this is the lowest one. Citizens should be very proud of what they've been able to accomplish. Next slide. A critical component to analyzing water planning is to look at the water supply and its reliability. Currently, the city relies solely on groundwater. In the future, once the San Sos Regional Water Authority water supply project becomes online, surface water will be used to supplement the groundwater. The coordinated use of surface water and groundwater is also referred to as conjunctive use. This is a method to significantly increase the reliability of the water supply. A new requirement of the twenty twenty urban water management plan is a water shortage contingency plan. This is to be a standalone document included with the urban water management plan, and it provides details on how to proactively identify and respond to potential water shortages. A separate hearing will be held and a separate adoption process will be required for this plan. In addition to shortage response actions that are detailed in the water shortage contingency plan, the urban water management plan describes demand management measures, also known as water conservation measures, which have been implemented by the city. These include a water waste prohibition, which is part of the Water Conservation Ordinance, the installation of water meters, and a water meter portal accessible to customers, conservation pricing, public education and outreach, water audits, providing a water survey program, distribution of free water conservation devices, and rebate programs for toilets, washing machines, irrigation controllers, and dishwashers, as well as a turf replacement rebate program. So tonight, we're having the public hearing as detailed by Asia. There were notices of preparation which were issued to agencies such as San Sos County, the City of Turlock, City of Modesto. There were two newspaper notices published in the series Courier, and we have provided a very brief overview of the draft urban water management plan. So, public comments are welcomed tonight. And following adoption of the urban water management plan, when it occurs, there will be a requirement to submit the final documents to Department of Water Resources, California State Library, and other local agencies within thirty days, as well as making this document publicly available. Any questions, comments?
Council, questions?
Yes, Mayor. I, I just have some questions for clarification, and I want to thank you for your report and all the hard work you've put into this update for. So we, we've done this every five years in the past since nineteen eighty-three?
Two thousand and one, so.
Two thousand and one.
Yeah.
But we've, we've done this.
Well, it's actually, I believe the first one was in two thousand and five. I'd been two thousand, and then it happens every five years.
So since the new millennia, we've done this.
Yes.
Basically, every five years. Have we ever put in before this time, maybe the last time, was there ever talk of the surface water plant in this document before?
Yes, at least in the two thousand and fifteen, I didn't go back to the two thousand and ten, but it was definitely in the two thousand and fifteen document.
It was also discussed in the last two master plans for the water system as well.
But did we have started savings account or any type of projection for how we're going to pay for that or?
Hard to prepare, it's hard to prepare savings account when we didn't know the project was going to come to fruition. I mean, we've been working with Turlock Irrigation District for twenty-plus years on the surface water plant that's actually being constructed today. So in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, when we sat down with TID, developed the water sales agreement, entered the water rights, it all became real, then we went for the rates to pay for the project.
Now, in your report, you also touch on household income. And in the report, you state median household income's around fifty-one thousand dollars and fifteen point one percent of the series population is below the poverty level. You just kind of had those statistics in there. If they're anything that disadvantaged community, fifteen percent, does that make us eligible for anything from the state or federal government?
So on the state level, the water board, the water board reduces our fees, annual fees, by approximately ten thousand dollars per year. On the federal level, we haven't entertained those yet, but that's where we are with the state for the water board.
The water board gives us ten thousand dollars because our population is fifteen percent below.
Correct. So we filed for that in two thousand eighteen, eighteen, sorry. Two thousand eighteen, we filed for it, got it the last three years.
That's great, great news. Thank you for that. Also in the report, I just want to read a few different lines here. So, legal issues including place and use, abuse, and water rights issues are not expected to limit supply liability for the city. And a little further down, therefore, there are no defined legal pumping rights for the city, and there are no legal constraints on groundwater pumping. And further down, the GSP will include groundwater management criteria, which could impact the amount of groundwater the city is allowed to pump. So I'm a little confused when it says there's no expected, you know, not expected to limit supply, but further to that, further down, there might be an impact on the amount of groundwater that because of the state law seat, the groundwater management plan.
So for sigma, so sigma requirements, the, the sigma requires that the basins develop a ground sustainability plan. The plan hasn't been adopted yet. But right now is, until the plan gets adopted, each basin has to manage the water, and we're allowed to pump whatever we need. We've got variations of water. The drought has caused a lot of efficiencies in the well system to allow us to pump water. As the GSP gets adopted, each area is going to have a, a water bank per se. It can be a lot of a certain amount of water to pump, and that's across all, you know, from agriculture to municipalities to everybody.
And that, we have till January to adopt that?
Correct. Me too, right, yeah.
I do see that, the kind of a conflict in the language, so I can, I think it is worthwhile to look at adjusting that language to better describe the part. I think the first thing you had read related to is the groundwater laws, but now with sigma, things are changing. So I do, I do think it, we can revise that to avoid.
I appreciate that. I have two more examples, and they kind of incorporate the surface water plant. No major legal constraints associated with this process have been experienced and are expected. The SED coming down from the state water board mandates flow objectives for the lower San Joaquin River, which could affect the Tuolumne River and result in reduced availability of surface water for withdrawal by TID and therefore the city through SRWA. So there is a potential for limitations on surface water as well as groundwater.
Correct, correct, yes. I, I do think the language should be revised a little bit. Avoid that, those conflicts.
Thank you. And then the rehab, rehabilitation of the wells. After that process goes through, the city has observed a decrease in water production?
Yeah, we've, we've experienced a decrease for the last several years. The water production and the groundwater levels themselves are causing production issues. The two thousand and ten, the groundwater at seventy feet of a static water level, it's the same, about the same today, it's sixty-seven feet on average. The problem is that the, two thousand and ten, the pumping level from the wells was a hundred and six feet toward today, it's a hundred and forty-six feet. That variation itself, just in the, in the drought that's caused movement is, you know, some arguments I've seen hydraulic models where water's actually gone from the west to east rather than from east to west. That causes sand, that failures in the wells. We have a well right now that's off of Service Road that five years ago was pumping about twenty to twenty-two gallons per foot of well. Right now, we're pumping five. We're, we're having challenges in the groundwater system.
And just for a scope, the scope of this, Director, our, our Turlock Sub Ground Basin, that's actually one of the healthiest in the valley. Correct, or am I off on that?
Um, I don't know if you're off. I don't, I couldn't. I'm not sure I'm in a position to, to state yes or no.
A few, a few years ago, I think.
It is, I'd say it's one of the healthier ones, but the valley in general is not in a healthy state. So it's actually been designated as a critical groundwater basin, and that's why it's, we have the sigma, the groundwater sustainability plan. It's, the, the requirements for the timing of when you need to complete the groundwater sustainability plans vary by the health of the basin. And we're not in the, the fastest timeline, but we're not in the slowest. We're like in the second fastest.
I have just a few more things to get through here. One method is to be a signatory to the no, Jeremy cleared, cleared that up for me already. I do want to ask, is Monterey Park Track a part of this plan? Was that calculated in our overall plan?
Monterey Park Track's a customer, just like everybody else, they're a customer, so we don't treat anybody any indifferent, so. You know, how Monterey Park Track deals with their residents, they have a Prop two eighteen, so they have a municipal advisory committee that they report to. Francisco Diaz and talk regularly. There are any issues that arise, water rates, a few things like that, water quality. There's some, you know, differences between water quality and what Monterey Park Track has communicated compared to the CCR report that we produce. And there's a few variations, but they are a customer test.
So they, they were included in the overall million gallon usage?
Whatever we produce, they get, they're a part of.
Okay. And that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is no, any city council members have any comments or questions, we'll move on to opening up this hearing to the public. If there's anyone in the chambers or attended to Zoom that would like to speak. Draw is good.
Address the young ladies here. How many of the regulations come from the legislature as in the Senate and the Assembly? And how many are from the California Water Resources Board? Because we're doing things and we're, and we're adjusting our behavior based on, on these water regulations that, that don't come from our lawmakers, that come from the, the State Water Resources Board bureaucrats. You understand my point? So we're allowing ourselves to be, to be victimized. We, we heard tonight, we're in series doing an excellent job in curtailing our water use, right? We're, we've met the target, and I'd like to, you know, commend every resident of series on doing what we've been asked to do, but at what point? We know this week, this past week, the, the California Water Resources Control Board said the TID and, and the local water rights holders, not just TID, San Francisco with Hetch Eetchy, that we have to stop diverting from the Tuolumne River. That's our plan for our water. I mean legitimately, we plan to take water into the surface treatment plant from that watershed we've been told to stop using.
And the state water board approved that.
Excuse me?
State Water Board approved that, that use.
Right, but now they've said to stop pulling water after they approved the use, correct? So when do they tell us that we've been doing an excellent job, but yet we can't use that water? Right? Because we're not only series, we're TID too, as, as members of the Turlock Irrigation District. So, so we're, we're victimized twice by that same control board and, and, and their desires. When it's not coming from the legislature. The, so do we give any pushback to protect ourselves?
I mean, we, we fall within the, we fall within the guidelines that the state water dictates to us. You have to meet all the rules by the EPA, i.e. the state water board, for drinking water standards across the board. You know, the, the BMMs that are in place, the fourteen BMMs for, for water conservation, you know, they pushed those down. Two thousand and ten, I believe, started, increased them in two thousand and fifteen, now increasing them again. Gone from, you know, annual reporting on the water conservation to monthly and annual reporting just for water conservation. I do, I do. What you're saying is that, you know, at some point, do we push back on the state water board? I think we do everything in our power to meet the rules and the guidelines. At times, we walk a tight rope, but we also know that in order to, to get SRF funding and to meet future projects that we need, we need to meet.
Right, I under, I understand that, but at a certain point, I do water for a living, everybody. Water is my business. I make water go away. I use it for beneficial uses. So, all I'm saying is the water board puts us in a position where we have to make concessions, and those concessions not always a legitimate legal ruling or, or like that. And at a certain point, we're going to have to start looking into those things. We're doing a real good job in, in complying with the requests curtailing our usage. But let's face it, if we're, we're the only, the only community in the area that's meeting those targets, then, then maybe we, we're doing a great job. We don't need to curtail anymore, but we need to, to look in in these conversations to how do we protect ourselves from losing more in the future? Our water is a serious issue, and the decision here recently from the California Water Board has hamstrung us.
Thank you, Mr. Housegood. Any other members from the public? Seeing none? Go ahead and move on to Zoom. Do you have somebody? Moving on to Zoom.
Brand, I see your hand raised. I will unmute your mic.
Hi, I just have a, I just have a question. Is this report going to be, I mean, I know it's public, but as you were, as the, the ladies were doing the report, it did not come up on my screen. It just came up to the very first one. The, the next slide's never happened. And I just wondered, is, is this something that's going to be a, a public report that we can go to City Hall and get a copy of it? Or does anybody know?
Mr. Brand, I'll deliver one to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. If there are no more. Before we close this hearing, do we need an approval or do we close it first?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash ninety-four.
Second.
Get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Nay.
And Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
And passes three, one.
Thank you very much. This public hearing is now closed. Seeing no new business, moving on to discussion items. Stanislaw's Regional Water Authority SWRA, SWRWA Water Supply Project Update. Jeremy, that's your day.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. The general manager for the SRWA, Bob Granberg's in the audience, is going to give a brief presentation, and we wanted to, actually, I think this was Bob's idea. actually, I think this was Bob's idea, to give you a quarterly update. Just kind of tell you the status of the project, where we are, show you some pictures. It's moving along very well. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk to you about, uh, where the SRWA is in the process of bringing you a new surface water supply that you heard about in the Urban Water Management Plan. It is crucial for the area, the region, or the city of Series as well as the city of Turlock. Well, it's, uh, next slide. I start with a little bit of a history because it, I think Jeremy had indicated he's been working on this for, a lot of folks have been working on this for some thirty years. And it really got going in two thousand and eleven when, uh, Modesto, Series and Turlock came together to decide after the Turlock Irrigation District declined to move forward with the project that these cities would then join together to, uh, deliver the project. They formed the Joint Powers Authority. It's a legal entity for, for the Stanislaw Regional Water Authority. Uh, their goal was to purchase water from the Turlock Irrigation District because they have the water rights and the ability to, to transfer water to, uh, SRWA. And treat and deliver that water at cost to the cities. So whatever it costs to produce, that's what the cities would pay. There's no incentive for, uh, profit in this. A government code, as I said, established SRWA as a separate public entity from the cities. It has its governing board, which you're very familiar with. We meet on a monthly basis and we have currently contract staff and no employees at this point, but we're working on that because we'll need employees when the plant is up and running. Uh, the Joint Powers Authority was amended in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, uh, the city of Modesto had made the decision to continue to purchase water from the Modesto Irrigation District and they had plans to expand that plant. So they put their focus and energy in that endeavor. And at that point, uh, Series and Turlock took it on, uh, solely between the two, two cities. And, uh, it's, you know, leadership of the cities has, have to be commended for moving this project forward after decades of planning and, uh, decisions and non-decisions and reverse decisions and things like that. So, next slide. Project goals to improve water supply quality. You know, Jeremy Public Works is, is struggling with, uh, regulations from groundwater withdrawals. We'll have a clean surface water supply that will be treated river water. One location where it can be treated there and distributed out to the cities and ready to drink. All that treatment will take place at that one location and not spread out over, uh, you know, multiple sites uh, that have their own unique challenges. Uh, environmental benefits, uh, the water that will be released from the reservoir, Turlock Irrigation District to the, the outtake structure on the Toolumi River near Gear Road. Uh, that extra water in the river is a benefit for the fisheries upstream of the plant. Uh, provides diversity. You have, I saw on the prior slides, now have not only groundwater available to you, but groundwater and surface water. Uh, the in-lu recharge or, uh, conjunctive use, as we call it, is how we achieve that sustainable ground basin. If you're taking surface water when it's available and not using groundwater, then you're allowing the groundwater basin to recover on its own through natural recharge. And, uh, system operations, you'll have more flexibility in being able to operate the wells that, that you can well operate, work on the wells you need to work on because you have another source. So you can, uh, have more operational flexibility in that regard. Next slide. It's the only thing here, uh, just want to point out because a lot of this I've already said, but that drought resistancy. So if you're, if you're managing the groundwater basin appropriately, you can always rely on that groundwater basin in times when needed. And that's, uh, to meet, uh, drought conditions. There will be cutbacks from the Turlock Irrigation District to the project. We already know about that, uh, that we're on par with the irrigation customers. So when they're cut back, whatever percentage that is, SRWA will be cut back accordingly. So the cities need to maintain that drought resiliency, which the project helps to achieve. Project elements, really three main elements. There's a river intake and pump station where divert the water out of the Toolumi River. We pump that through a pipeline up to the water treatment plant where it is then treated. And then, uh, it's pumped out to the cities through transmission mains to your local facilities. And primarily for Series, the pipeline, I'll get into more detail later, but, uh, primarily uh, westbound off of Gear Road along the Series Main Canal to the River Bluff Park on the east end, where you will have a terminal facility, we call it, which is really a storage tank and pump station. And, uh, Turlock has a similar, uh, pipeline that will go down primarily down Berkeley Road for the folks that travel in that area. You're starting to see impact from construction of the Turlock Pipeline. Uh, the Series Pipeline has not started yet because of the proximity to the irrigation canal. We have to wait until the non-irrigation season when the canal is dry and that's on or about November first. I'll have more about that later on. Next slide. A project schedule, uh, as I mentioned, with the signing of the Joint Powers Authority in two thousand and fifteen, uh, two thousand and sixteen is when really the, the focus on the project really kicked off, you know, the planning effort, uh, some design work and how the project was going to be funded. Uh, two thousand and seventeen really focused on environmental, uh, land acquisition, the contract with, uh, Turlock Irrigation District. All of that activity during that time leading to, in two thousand and twenty, contract was awarded for a design build project with Jacobs to, uh, design and construct the facilities. And that's what we're in the midst of now. We're currently about twenty-five percent complete as on a dollar basis. That may not automatically correlate to what's in the ground, but, uh, there's design expenditures, you know, upfront, but, uh, from an overall project expenditure standpoint, we're about quarter of what we've done. And, uh, we're on schedule, happy to report that and on budget, under budget. And, uh, the, uh, the goal is to reach our two thousand and twenty-three startup date in about June of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the project will be, uh, the plant will be tested and commissioned. The state will, State Department of Public, Department of, Department of Public. Used to be DPA, DDW, sorry, Division of Drinking Water, uh, will issue us a permit to start delivering water to the cities. Under two years. Next slide, please. A project costs, these are contained, uh, not entirely. There's project costs beyond the total, the hundred and eighty-four point nine. That is just the SRF loan. So, uh, total expenditures were in the two hundred and twenty million dollar range, uh, reduced through grants that we have received on the project. So the total borrow on the, the regional project is a hundred and eighty-four point nine million. Uh, just, uh, less than a month ago, uh, that SRWA Board approved the SRF loan with state. We're just awaiting their signature on that and, uh, begin reimbursements of project expenditures. Back to July of two thousand and twenty. Uh, generally, the project is, it's split two-thirds to Turlock, one-third to Series based on how much water we'll be getting out of the project. Not an exact two-thirds, one-third because some of the components are, are specific to each city. And Series Pipeline is shorter and smaller than Turlock Pipeline. So in that regard, they have more expenditure on the project. But, but generally, it's the two-thirds, one-third. Uh, from the, uh, debt service schedule, the SRF loan, uh, entirely, you know, in total for what SRWA will be paying is two point five million dollars per year for thirty years. Now, Series, uh, annual O and N is approximately one point seven million. The, the number's not final because we don't have a, a, the staffing plan yet. We don't know, uh, precisely what our energy cost is going to be. Don't know precisely what our chemical costs are going to be, uh, but we're, we're going to be narrowing that in uh, is, as the project gets close to completion. But we do know what the annual debt services. Next slide. Uh, the project cost components I've touched on briefly, fifteen million gallon per day water treatment, initial, uh, raw water pumping from the river. Uh, we have a structure that can accommodate the full build out. But we're only installing the, the pumping capacity for the first phase, what we're calling first phase of fifteen MGB. Uh, we have a forty-five million gallon, uh, capacity raw water transmission main. That's to accommodate all the pumping out of the river for both, uh, the project and for the Turlock Irrigation District to be able to divert, uh, station water from that point in the river up to the canals. Uh, Series, uh, will be constructing a fifteen million gallon per day finished water transmission main. That's your full build out. First phase is five MGB for Series, second phase is ten fifteen, uh, total in, after phase three. And talk a little bit about phases. Uh, the Urban Water Management Plan is, is helping to inform SRWA on that, the timing of phase two and phase three. So that, that's your planning document that we rely on to make our decisions. Your water supplier. Uh, Turlock will have a thirty million gallon per, uh, per day, uh, capacity water transmission main for the same purposes. Ultimately reaching that third phase build out and all the water that they would be getting from the project. Of fifteen million gallon per day, a water treatment plant in first phase that we're building currently today. And then we had a, a bridge replacement over Series Main Canal on Aldrich Road. Some of the project cost reduction measures, uh, the SRF loan was, uh, a big deal for this project from a financing perspective. That loan came in at one point two percent annual interest rate. Uh, and that was compared to a four percent typical municipal bond financing approach. And, uh, by going with the SRF loan, that equates to about a hundred million dollars in savings over the life of the, of the loan, thirty years. Uh, we had a total of thirty-five million dollars in grants received to date for the project that reduced that, that, that borrowing cost from the, from the total project cost. And the design build project delivery. That was, that, uh, method of project delivery is chosen to find efficiencies and be able to find, uh, save time and money and find opportunities to drive down capital and oil costs through the design and construction effort. Like briefly mentioned earlier, we are under budget because we have taken advantage of some of those flexibilities and creativity in the design of the project that weren't contemplated originally. And that has brought, uh, we're currently at standard a million dollars from the work, uh, project cost. We continue to find ways to, uh, reduce the cost of the project and make the project more efficient in operations. Uh, the wet well and infiltration gallery, uh, if you click the, the button again, it'll give us the little. It's a series of, of pipes, perforated pipes that are buried underneath the, uh, in the bed of the river, about six feet below the bottom of the river. Those were installed by the Turlock Irrigation District back early two thousands when, when they were contemplating, uh, building a diversion for their irrigation purposes and moving forward with the regional facilities. And, uh, two thousand and eighteen, we, uh, awarded a contract to build what we call the wet well. Uh, it's a large concrete box, uh, that, uh, picks up those pipes from the river and becomes the base of the pump station. So, next slide, please. Uh, that was a, a very challenging project, um, high groundwater levels being adjacent to the river. A lot of environmental constraints. The project was successfully completed after really challenging conditions. Ultimately resulted in, uh, ground freezing and, uh, I've never been involved in that in all my years of civil engineering, but it was, it was quite unique and quite successful, allowing us to be able to excavate fifty, fifty-foot plus deep hole and then build a big concrete box in that space. Uh, we completed it in early two thousand, but, uh, in late two thousand and nineteen, we, we tested the infiltration gallery for its capacity to be able to deliver the wa, the water treatment plant. Uh, it was very successful, uh, it proved out to its design capacities. That was good news and a lot of risk taken off the project at that point. Uh, I think this was the riskiest part of the regional facilities with building this wet well. Uh, the water treatment plant is, uh, located on a forty-eight acre site just above the river, uh, east of the Fox Grove Park, uh, was land that was owned by Turlock Irrigation District and leased to a wall farmer. Uh, we purchased that, uh, just late in December of last year. Talked about the fading, so I'll skip that. Uh, I did, uh, one of the project elements is a low split structure where allow TID to divert water from the river and into canal. This is a aerial view from a drone during a night concrete pour of the future water storage tank, a five million gallon water storage tank. One of the, the largest, the first element of construction because it was the deepest up out of the ground, but, uh, the elements, components of the water treatment plant, don't want to get into too much, uh, technical detail, but we have pre-treatment, uh, we have zone for disinfection. Uh, we have filters to filter out the, filter the water. Uh, the water storage tank that you see is being built there and pump station to deal for the water to the cities. And then the, the solids that we separate from the liquid portion, water treatment, uh, will dry that on site through low sand filters. A lot of this I've already touched on because I kind of go off script a little bit. Uh, you know, uh, Series has a five mile, uh, long pipeline, uh, thirty inch diameter to ultimately deliver fifteen million gallons per day. But the Series, the city of Series, Jeremy's Department is constructing your terminal facilities. And I believe that, that construction is going to start, uh, about October first. So there will be some coordination between SRWA project and local project. Next slide. Uh, just a little bit on public outreach and education. We do have a website. I encourage everyone to go there. Uh, we, we keep it up to date on a weekly basis with, uh, project information. Uh, you, you can access, uh, board, uh, packets and minutes, uh, all planning documents for the project. Uh, we update, um, construction project progress. Uh, we have construction photos. We have a time lapse, uh, video. That's really neat. And, uh, we, in addition to that, we have a social media presence. And we also are putting out, uh, utility bill inserts. And I, I'd like to say that we recently sent some to Series and they should be coming out this month in the customers' utility bills. And that gives you the what, why, where, when of the project. And more importantly, because construction of the Series Pipeline is going to be starting here in November, uh, project impact or construction impacts to traffic. So, but like I said, we keep that up to date on a weekly basis. And we have a, a really cool map that shows where we are and dates of progress and, uh, updates on traffic control, where dealers are posted and things like that. Highly encourage the public to, to visit our site. You can sign up for, uh, regular emails from us and project updates and things to note. And we'd like to see a lot of activity. I wanted, want the public to be engaged, although it's kind of far away over there, east of Houston, kind of out of sight, out of mind, but when that pipeline starts, you'll see it. And, uh, in twenty-two months, uh, you'll be drinking that water. So we're excited about that. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
Director, thank you for, uh, being here and providing this update. I'll start at the beginning of your slide, uh, the history in two thousand and eleven when Series, Turlock and Modesto formed the JPA. Nobody did anything formally to try to save money in their water fund or, uh, start saving money for this project. They just formed a JPA.
That's my understanding. Um, I'm, I'm new to the authority in two thousand and eighteen and I've, I've kind of looked back at some of the history, but from a personal standpoint, standpoint, I can't, uh, comment, uh, what those decisions were made at that time. Those decisions were made at that time, I. I can imagine, you know, have done this, been in this business for a long time, you know, they start to look at planning and their T I D. A water sales agreement and uh, trying to determine what, how are we going to do this? And then once, once that those plans start to come into place, uh, then cities would. Or to plan on how they're going to fund it and what that would relate as far as water rates and. Take something to your your water rate payer, you have to prove that it's a, it's something in hand that's tangible that will be delivered upon and will become. Come to fruition, so, uh, and you know, during that period of time, I think there was probably some back and forth about uh, you know, what what the project's going to look like. Maybe Midas was talking to M I D at the time and.
Well, the obviously four years later, Midas wasn't there, uh, and then so twenty fifteen. And then I want to clarify when the rates came in, so twenty fifteen, series and Turlock decided to move forward without Modesto. And then what year were the rates taken a look at?
Beginning of eighteen. Is when they began, so we started the rate studies for both, both the cities of Turlock and started the rate studies in twenty seventeen. And they were both implemented in January of.
And I do want to touch on uh, something you mentioned about the drought cutbacks will impact this project in the future, they have the potential to.
That is correct, uh, as I mentioned, uh, whatever announced curtailments from the Turlock Irrigation District, uh, their board decides to enforce during a given water year. Uh, those would apply to S R W A as well.
So what would be our allocation from the surface water plant if it was currently operating?
Uh, what is the current curtailment today? I I I'm not sure what that is.
The T I D's got a twenty five percent curtailment right now at the ag world, so that we would in turn at twenty five percent decrease as well. We also have some offset water requirements where we're required under our water sales agreement to give water back to T I D. And then we're also required to send some additional waters down to Turlock for tertiary treatment to sell as well back to T I D. So in the the amendment for the water sales agreement came into place a year and a half before the uh. amended the water sales agreement, at that time, we left the offset water requirements on as they were written. Knowing that we were going to come and sit down and review those, because there's still little, there's some gray areas as to how much water we required to cut back. To give back when the project itself purchased thirty thousand acre feet of water per year, we're only using fifteen thousand. So there's, there's just some language that needs to get clarified.
And if the state, uh, you know, to touch on what Mr. Osgood, I think was talking about earlier, if the state says you can't pump. Are we still allowed to pump or because of T I D senior water right?
So we're still going to be allowed to pump, but there's two, there's two, there's two trains going. One train is the A C D and the FERC relicensing from Don Pedro. And then the other side is the groundwater sustainability plan for pumping water out of the ground. So, you know, i- is is the state going to come together to where both plans align? Odds or not, um, we just have to figure out the best way to manage it. So if the state were to come in and say, we need to decrease pumping and or the ag side has to decrease pumping, we may have to do some additional pumping on the groundwater system. So the it's, you know, like. The the presentation stated that the this, this project is built on a conjunctive use system. So right now we have thirteen groundwater wells, we're installing a new one over at Whitmore Mansion right now, that park there. So that puts us at fourteen, you know, the water master plan has has it planned out for a new well under construction every two years. We have to continue the groundwater system, you know, we're at eleven million gallons per day of peak capacity at during the summertime. Well, the surface water plant's only going to be giving us five, so that additional water has to come from somewhere. And we have the additional wells that we've installed treatment on for T C P, those wells have to run as well because of the T C P treatment itself, otherwise it causes operational issues. It's just a, it's going to be a juggling act once the system goes in place.
Thanks for that clarification, uh, Jeremy. And under budget, on schedule, director?
Yes, currently, yes.
I I wanted to go back to the slide, uh, it was about the debt service. Two point five million for series for the next thirty years. And then one point seven in operating and maintenance cost. And is that just to series or is that total?
That's just to series, uh, the debt schedule is in the S R F loan that the S R W A board adopted or approved uh, three weeks ago. And so I just took a one third of that debt service to come up with that number. And then I also presented uh, approximate operations cost or staffing costs and and uh, I took an estimate of that. And that's why I said it's not final and just took one third of that total to come up with that number. Just to give you an idea of approximately where you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any members of the public that would have a question to the director? Ian, none?
You have a reasons.
Hmm, I seen that, it's a, Lee.
Mr. Brandt, I'll unmute your mic.
Yeah, I just have a, I just have a question for Jeremy, I guess. Now, when this goes online, you know, in two thousand twenty two, twenty three, is that going to uh, bring down our our uh, T D S? Our total dissolve solids, I mean, are we going to get more purified water? Once it comes through there? And then, oh, go go ahead, Jeremy.
So during the winter time, yes, during the summertime, there's going to be more of a mix, um, a blended source. So you can imagine the water is going to be delivered to the um, eastern side of town to River Bluff Park. So it's, we're installing some large water mains on the outsides, we've got a project on Hatch Road to install a big main. We've installed a big main down Laker um, to help move water to the west side of town. So hopefully that year around, there's a more easier blend of water to lower the T D S, but during the winter time, most definitely. During the winter time, we're expecting the the, you know, seventy to eighty percent of the water supply to the city will be off service water.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious and I just, you know, I, we've been watching this for quite a while and. I know I complained earlier about my my high bill, but I knew it was coming, I just, I I just had to say something, but anyway, okay, well, thank you very much.
When I deliver that plan tomorrow, we'll talk about that, too.
Ah, appreciate it, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Osgood, do you have a question, I was just making sure, because you see you're standing up. Oh, you you're okay, you can go ahead and.
Our peaks during the summertime, that's the max.
And uh, we know the gentleman said that the first phase will be five million gallons per day come to series. The phase three will be fifteen thou or fifteen million. The series, right now, we're at twenty five percent reduction if the ag reductions with T I D hold true for the the region water authority. So that would be our allotment would be three point seven five if the current curtailment is is enforced.
Correct.
So, I mean, does that affect, does the eleven million we're pumping now satisfy our our need, our anticipated need in the future?
And it will increase, as I said earlier, the, we're under construction now well over the Whitmore Mansion Park. And every other year, we're planning on drilling another well, so we have to continue with the groundwater system.
It's my understanding that that these increases that we put in place earlier are helping to offset the the final cost of the project. That's why our water bills are so high, that we're, we're paying it in advance. So to speak.
So to speak, yes.
That project.
Correct.
Right, correct. I know Mr. Brandt addressed that he that was coming, but I want to make sure everybody understands that we are, you know, being proactive and funding our own project.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Okay. There are no more questions? Also. Jeremy, thank you, we'll move on. Moving on to council referrals, is there anybody on the council who would like to like an agenda placed on the future agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Have a few here, uh, first, I would like to refer a series of public safety workshops. Uh, these would be informative for the public and include discussions that clarify public safety activities and abilities. It could include dispatch, code enforcement, uh, the public app uh, for people to report issues around town. Uh, and how the public and public safety engage, um, public hearing officer process for uh, fines such as the fireworks. Uh, staffing and the role of officers and responsibilities, training and uh, the various departments or various divisions throughout the department such as traffic.
Mayor, could you please repeat the first portion of your question, please?
A series of public safety workshops, it's the, what I'm getting at over.
Your goal is to start a public safety workshop. The audience could participate, talk about those.
So the public can learn about uh, the roles and responsibilities of our officers. What they face, um, the pension liability issue that we're all dealing with uh, throughout the state. To be informative and proactive uh, in those regards.
So you want that to be an agenda item, that's, that's doing. Because that's, that's what we're doing right now.
Well, yeah, we we would have to say that we want to do that, correct?
First, correct?
Yeah.
That'd be correct for the attorney.
And we can discuss some varieties.
To put a, my understanding is put a future agenda item on to talk about public safety workshops relating to public safety.
Okay, we can discuss further on the details of that if that's the council would like to do. You made a motion?
Yes, Mayor, that's.
It doesn't have to be a motion, or could we just say yes?
Been looking for consensus on these in the past. We've just created an agenda item, it comes back for further discussion at council, which time they give us direction to.
No, you did have a question or.
I don't think the vice mayor is done with his request, are you? Are you done with your request?
Well, that's the first one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, we could take them one at a time, if if you like this or don't like it.
I mean, else we can go ahead and do, I would rather do that.
I just have a comment, I believe that it could be a great thing that we should wait till we have a permanent city manager on board. To facilitate something like that.
Yeah, um, city council agrees on a future.
Yes.
Item, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Hey, second item here, uh, the beautification committee, uh, I would like to place that on a future agenda to extend it for another year. And start the process for the committee to meet regularly, uh, you know, throughout the year.
I'm for that. Also. Thank you. That will also be on a future, be another on the agenda. An extension though, because did we have some kind of limitations on that only for a year or? See. Was that?
I don't remember the limitations, I just know that we haven't, we haven't met.
We'll discuss it when.
Several months, so we'll bring it back, talk more.
That was good. Any other council member, so Mr. Right.
I have two, I have two more there.
Two more, okay, look.
Sorry about that.
New record.
To allow a personal choice for city employees regarding COVID vaccination.
Is a good topic.
Didn't we get an email from the city manager regarding this because of the potential mandate or the mandate from the president? And I thought the email was that he was researching it and that the labor unions were going to be involved in.
I guess it's not officials kind of what.
I I would like to be proactive and uh, my personal opinion that people should be able to choose uh, for themselves and. The government shouldn't require you to get a COVID nineteen vaccine, that's my opinion.
Also continue to support those who want to get vaccinated.
Of course.
Testing. If you, Vice Mayor. And that's just an item we can discuss and. You know, in combination with the information that we were going to receive, that it might not come down the pipeline so quickly. So maybe right as you start getting information from the federal government, maybe that'd be a good time to put it on the agenda.
Just for a future agenda, not being discussed this meeting or the next problem.
Okay. Agree on that myself. Council.
We can put it on an agenda.
We just need to make sure we wait and see what comes down from the state and the county and take all that into consideration when we make any decision regarding that.
And your next one, Vice.
My, my last one here uh, would be to reopen applications for the planning commission and measure.
You want to reopen the applications even, we already have, we already kind of moving forward with that?
Yes, I do believe we should reopen uh, applications. Before, before the fifth member is sat, uh, so he can take a vote on a fresh slate.
Somebody can please remind me where we were last time, we had applicants that applied and discussed it, we just didn't bow it on it, correct?
We had, they applied, we interviewed them, we selected the the amount that would fill all the spots. And then we tabled it till we would have five people on the council, that's where it stands now. And I believe that we should continue to do it as we first decided and not reopen them.
Okay, I was, I was going to, the vice mayor was that his request for referrals, I was going to ask for the same thing about. Planning commission at major age, because I think Mr. Osgood brought up a good point that it's been nine months. And that we don't even know if the individuals that we interviewed are still interested or not. But I think we should have. An agenda item where we can decide if. If we want to move forward with the existing applicant applicant, or if we want to reopen it, we would have to do that. At an agenda, at a, at a meeting, we couldn't just decide sitting here tonight that how we wanted to do it. Correct, we'd have to have it put on the agenda.
That's correct.
So the vice mayor and I both agree that we should have an agenda item, just the, how we will fill the planning commission and major.
We just have a discussion with the city council member possibly when he's there, because you're saying reopening up, what if the, if the council member doesn't?
We're asking is to have an agenda item for a discussion, if we want to. Use what our process was nine months ago, or do we want to? Move in a different direction and reopen it, but we have to have it on an agenda to to discuss what process we want to do.
It's purely a discussion.
With the fifth council.
Correct.
I'm okay with that, that sounds fair.
Different than my motion, but I, I agree, but I agree.
More of a discussion versus an actual decision on reopening, because I haven't made my decision.
We, we will make our decision which avenue we're going to do, but it has to be on the agenda to discuss it.
I I personally feel that in fairness to the city council member, at least have him have a voice in this discussion, so I'll say yes. I'm sorry, okay, so. There you have it. If there are no more referrals, we'll move on to reports, I have no report. Also. Works. Acting city manager.
City attorney.
Of the department heads. Okay, and do we have the county supervisor on the lineup today or no? Doesn't seem like it. Doesn't seem like it. Okay, so we will now adjourn this meeting to go to a closed session for a public employment, city manager and complex labor negotiators. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to closed session item, after the closed session, city attorney will return with their report out. Thank you.
Okay, on the second item conference with labor negotiator, the council gave direction to staff.